Good evening, everyone. It is seven thirty-six P M on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. This is the regular school board meeting of the Board of Education of Warren Township High School, District one twenty-one. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next, we're going to approve the agenda. I'm going to make this motion because we did have a change. So I move to approve the agenda as amended. Is there, okay. We have a second roll call vote, please.
Motion by DeMonti.
Yes.
Dr. Fields.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Pope.
Yes.
And Mr. DeMonti.
Yes.
Uh, yes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to move on to our favorite part of the meeting, which is the recognition of students, um, sometimes faculty, staff, parents. Uh, we just love getting visitors. So, uh, at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Weisman.
Uh, good to see everybody here today. I think first, uh, we're going to invite our bilingual parent advisory committee up with Dr. Moran.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Hi.
Hi, we're here today to recognize our bilingual president, our bilingual parent advisory council president, Mr. Miguel Morales. He, uh, has been a part of our committee for the last two years. We started our B-PAC, uh, a year ago, and now this is the second year of term. Unfortunately, his son is graduating, which is great, but, uh, he's also, uh, unfortunately, he has to leave now because his son is graduating from Warren Township High School this year. So, um, that, we wanted to recognize him with this plaque. He's done a wonderful job. He helped us, uh, through our planning, our, um, just giving us ideas, feedback on how to improve our programming. He was a great leader and a great motivator for our committee. So we have an active committee of members, and, uh, we're just so excited and happy that he's here today. So I'm going to just repeat this in Spanish briefly so that if you don't mind. Buenas noches, this is la directora del programa multilingüe aquí de las escuelas de, what can, de Warren Township High School, excuse me. Este, el señor Miguel Morales, él es nuestro presidente del comité de padres bilingües. Él ha sido presidente por los dos últimos años. Él ha sido muy activo con nuestro comité. Los dio sugerencias de cómo mejorar el comité, uh, ideas de tipos de talleres. Fue un gran líder y muy motivado para hacer mejor y acelerar nuestro programa. So hoy le queremos dar este, la placa para darle las gracias por todos su, este, sus esfuerzos que hizo aquí. Y también, este, desafortunadamente, su hijo se va a agradar este año y ya no va a ser presidente, pero vamos a tener un nuevo presidente. So our new president will be right here, Ms. Leslie Garcia. So she will be taking office. So let's give a round of applause to Mr. Miguel Morales. Do you want to say something? Quieres decir algo?
Um, I'm going to say in Spanish. Um, bueno, me, me da mucho gusto haber pertenecido al grupo B-PAC. Uh, me voy, pero se queda la señora Leslie. Yo creo que merece mucha, como mucha responsabilidad y mucho apoyo sobre el, sobre el programa B-PAC, especialmente los latinos que nos apoyen más para poder crecer en nuestra comunidad. Gracias.
Oh, he's very happy. Mr. Morales is very happy to have been a part of the B-PAC. He's, um, looking forward to having Ms. Leslie take over, and he's asking for the support of the board and our, our Latino families to keep this B-PAC going. So he's very thankful for all your hard work, and then he hopes that Ms. Leslie will continue on. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good picture of that.
All right, thank you for coming. Uh, next up, uh, we have Mr. Pagan. He's going to introduce one of our tech campus students uh, who participated in the Skills USA competition.
Good evening, everyone. Make this a little taller. Hi, my name's Zach Pagan, and I serve as the district's tech campus coordinator for about the last five years. Um, this year, we sent just under about four hundred students to tech campus, and next year, that number is increasing a little more to close to five hundred. Um, but of those four hundred students, eighteen Warren students qualified for the Skills USA competition in Peoria this year, which is at the state level. And of those eighteen Warren students, only one of those students qualified for Nash, the national championships in Atlanta coming up this June, and that student is Josiah Richards. Now, the Skills USA competition every year is, it's a big deal. When he goes to Atlanta, he's going to be on the stage competing with about sixty-five hundred kids from all over the United States and judged by about over two thousand professionals in their fields. So Skills USA, their mission statement is Skills USA is America's proud champion of the skilled trades. Their mission is to empower students to become skilled, professional, career-ready leaders and responsible community members. Now, Josiah possesses each of those qualities and put them on full display in Peoria in the area of interactive application and video game creation. So that was their specific field and event they competed in. So I'm going to ask Josiah to say a, a couple things about his experience at the skills in Peoria. So Josiah, why don't you share with everyone here in the board kind of what you guys created for the competition and put on display for your peers and, um, I guess skilled people in your trade.
Hi. Uh, well, we created a video game. Uh, I think that stands for itself. Um, but it, the concept is horror. Um, basically, you're stuck in an island. You have to find an object, and the entire time you're finding the object, you're being chased by a ten-foot-tall, uh, tree monster. Um, and then once the character finds the object, um, they go to the place where they're supposed to, and, uh, they realize that they've been tricked, and you're chased by yet another monster. So for the main character, it's not a very fun day. Um, as for what I did down at the competition, uh, most of the game was built before we actually went, um, because we didn't have time to create an entire game, um, in a day. Um, so we built the game for about two months. We worked on it. We took it to the competition, and during the competition time, um, we just presented the game to the judge along with all of our, um, previous work, uh, which mostly consisted of design document showcasing our thought process, um, concept arts, um, strengths and weaknesses of the game, something that we would apply to the current version of the game, which we're taking to, uh, nationals. Um, and then we just showcased it, and that was it, I guess.
Perfect. Thank you, Josiah. Nice.
So overall, I want to thank Josiah and his parents for being here tonight, raising a brilliant young man. We want to thank the board for providing opportunities for hundreds of kids each year to go over to tech campus and have an experience in something that they love and be able to showcase it. And I'm confident Josiah is going to represent the Warren community well in Atlanta. So thank you.
All right, next up, we have our Avanza group. I think there's a lot of them out there. You guys can all come up, stand up and come up, uh, to the mic.
Good evening. Uh, first of all, thank you for having us. I'm one of the advisors. I'm Luz Bravo, and Lina Rangeli is the other advisor for Avanza. We do have, um, our junior, Yair Garcia, and senior, Ozzy Panate, that can tell you about the experience and everything that comes with Chicano College Bowl.
Okay. Hello, good afternoon. Um, I'd like to start off by saying how thankful I am to be here. It's an incredible team of students and obviously teachers, um, who helped lead the way. Um, uh, none of this could have been done without them, you know? I'm so glad for the opportunity as a coach and as an officer for Avanza. I've really learned a lot, met a lot of great people, um, created genuine relationships with a lot of them, and I hope that Avanza continues to do well. You know, they're really always coming up with great ideas and, you know, helping out the community. So I hope that whoever gets to be part of the team next year continues to, um, achieve success. And obviously, the competition was great, and we continue to, you know, do good every year, so let's keep on, keep it, keep it going. And now Ozzy will continue talking.
I am Ozzy. Um, I also coached for, uh, the Chicano College Bowl team this year. I'm incredibly thankful for having such an incredibly intelligent batch of students. Our team was almost entirely new compared to last year, and it was entirely student-led, and we came out even better than the year before, and we won the competition. I'm really glad and extremely confident that we can keep doing it again and again like we have for the past many years.
And then just really quick, raise your hand if you are on the varsity team. And then we're also missing one, Yoelip Pinera, and who actually won the scholarship out of many schools competing, just like Ozzy here did. And then also our JV team, if you guys could raise your hand. We are very proud of everyone here, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then next, I think we have Science Olympiad. Probably a group of people here for Science Olympiad.
Okay. Hello, thank you. Uh, thanks for having us. I'm Jeff Olson. I teach physics here at Alman. John Gray is chemistry at O'Plane, and we've been kind of running the show this year. Um, I want to first say thank you for, um, offering this program for the students. Um, two years ago, we didn't have a team. The previous coaches left the district. Nobody stepped up. Last year, I stepped up and, you know, got it going again. So thank you for leaving that position open. Uh, the students really love it. So Science Olympiad is, um, it's a team of fifteen people, and typically of a varsity and JV team, and they're And there's 23 different events and each event, you work with at least one other person. So you're, you're like a team of two, some events, three. And this year, we, we performed pretty well at regionals, but we're in a very strong regional. We're Stevenson and UChicago Lab Schools. So we did not make state as a team, but they do have individual state competition. That's where we went, McHenry County College. So they blew me away at that, okay? We take no credit for this. They prepare on their own, they get all their notes and study it and everything. And, you know, we, I think we're hoping to come away with maybe a couple of state medals. And we got, wait, six? Three, four, five, seven. Seven events we got. So I'm just gonna, I want the team to come up and just introduce themselves and what event they were in and what medal they got. So you want to start?
Hi, I'm Inia Saravanen. I was in entomology at this competition and I got first place.
Hi, I'm Solly Heller. I just graduated and I was in the event bungee drop with Vandana and we got third place.
Hi, I'm Vandana. I'm a junior. I got third place in bungee drop with Solly and second place in Reddit Do It with Safa.
Hi, I'm Safa Warris. I'm a junior and I got second place in Reddit Do It with Vandana.
Hi, I'm Chloe Aldrin. I competed in, what, electric vehicle, forensics and, what was that they were going to do? Optics. And I got a second place medal with Solly in forensics.
Nice.
Hi, I'm Rohan and I competed in Codebusters and Microb Mission. I got second in Codebusters with Abhishek and Seth and I got fifth in Microb Mission with Madison.
Hello, I'm Abhishek. I got second in Codebusters with Rohan and Seth.
Okay, so just one real quick thing. Half of these students who medal at state are underclassmen. So really looking forward to the future and what we can do next year. So thanks again for having us. Appreciate it.
We really appreciate the families for being here tonight, the students for representing Warren and the staff members that are coaches and advisors. I think that's the recognition portion unless I forgot someone.
Insert something, Dr. Dean?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just again, an appreciation on behalf of the Board of Education, those of us sitting around the table and the two that couldn't be here with us today, just the parent support, like, you know, BIPAC, that stepping up and giving your time to the school or our students who we already knew were amazing, but we get to hear how amazing they are, which is great, or the modest nature of our professionals working for us to say it's all the students, but yet you somehow guide them to these awards and accomplishments and we know that's not 100% the students, we know it's because of your involvement as well. So just, I want to make sure that you heard it from us, the board, that we're very appreciative of every level of involvement, involvement from everybody here that came tonight to just take their time and show us the great things that are happening. So thank you for that.
And then we typically give you permission, you don't need it, but you have permission to leave if you'd like. We'll go on to the business portion of our meeting. You can stay as well if you'd like. Okay, can I also say, I just realized, we were talking about this in the hallway, if you're in the new platform on the agenda, you clicked on an attachment and can't figure out how to get back, if you click one of the headers, like number seven Superintendent Report, it will pull back, it seems to be pulling back.
On the left, you mean?
At the right location!
Yes.
That's what I was doing.
Just figured it out.
But you have to remember to open the left.
Yes.
Which I wasn't doing at first, yes.
Yeah, that's what I was doing.
I remembered that while we were sitting here.
Just figured that out.
It has to be the header, it can't be something under the number.
That's all I have for recognitions.
Thank you. As we have people transitioning, we'll move to public comment. This is an opportunity for the community members to address the board. If there are any audience members that would like to speak at this time, please come forward to the podium. And if there aren't, I will spare you the rest of my speech. Okay, you are spared. Moving on to committee reports, is this something, Dr. Weisman, that you were, had any?
I don't have anything to add to what's submitted there.
Okay, so in that section of our board packet, we had different reports from committees that we may have been a part of, like Committee of the Whole or some of the Safety Committee, Curriculum Committee. Is there any, I know that all of us reviewed it, but if there's any questions for Dr. Weisman or his team, this would be the time to ask those. No? Okay. We're going to move on from committee reports to Superintendent's Report. Dr. Weisman?
I do have a couple of things to pull out here. One is, I noted on my monthly submission that I met this last month with stakeholders separately from both the hockey, our community hockey team, and what I call like aquatic stakeholders. The aquatic stakeholder meeting was something that the board asked me to do at some point this year. We'll can, I'm going to meet with them again in the fall, but there are some notes about that conversation that I think was productive. The hockey conversation also is something to, that I'd like to bring your attention to because I note in there that we have historically supported the hockey team in many ways that we usually only support our internal teams. I think there's a lot of history with the hockey team. I am considering changing that and pulling away from that, that same level of support that we provided in the past. But you do have in a couple of places in board policy that we have a hockey team. So that, we don't have to talk about it tonight, but just put that in the back of your mind, that that's probably something we need to talk about over the summer, next couple of meetings. Then I also just want to point out that Jean's helped us look ahead to the tri-conference in November. And so if you're intending on going to the tri-conference, I think she's got a link to just collect some information for you because we like to get our names there in the registration sooner rather than later. If you're having any trouble with the link, she can definitely help you just figure out what you need for that conference. That's all I have unless people have questions.
I just want to say, because it's mentioned in the report about some of us visited classrooms, some other board members and I did that, and just how much I enjoyed that because it's what we're all here for, but we never get to actually be in classrooms and see what's happening. And it's just fun to see kids in there learning and teachers teaching and it was great.
I also want to thank you for your efforts to meet with the aquatic stakeholders.
It's swimmers, it's, it's water polo, it's like classes for the younger kids, some of the clubs, yeah.
I really appreciate that. I think it's a, it's a very needed dialogue as we consider how to move forward with that whole situation, so thank you very much for doing that.
Is there anything else for Dr. Weisman in the Superintendent's Report? Questions, comments? Nope? All right. We'll move on to Consent Agenda, of which I'm going to read the motion just because it's a little lengthy. I move to approve the Consent Agenda items, which include personnel recommendations per Exhibit A, numbers 110 through 122 as posted, and Exhibit B, numbers B36 through B41 as posted, and Sky Hernandez, new hire, and Rihanna Waxenhurst, new hire, the payment of bills dated May 27, 2025 in the amount of $5,011,706.5. The executive session minutes of April 22, 2025, and the regular meeting minutes of May 13, 2025, and the 2024-2025 final school calendar as presented. The Warren Township High School cheerleading team trip to Carthage College from July 14 through 16, 2025, and the Warren Township High School football program trip to Carthage College from July 14 to 16, 2025. The nursing services provider agreement with Bright Star Care for the 2025-2026 school year. The renewal of property casualty, student accident, foreign liability, cyber liability, and workers' compensation insurance policies. Collective liability insurance corp, cooperative, click, for one year effective July 1, 2025 as presented. The diesel fuel bid and award Avalon Petroleum Company for the 2025-2026 school year. Food service pricing as proposed for the 2025-2026 school year. And the class size for identified classes through the 2025-2026 school year as proposed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, discussion?
Can I ask one question? Yeah. I just wanted to ask about the field trip plans. One of the field trips describes how they'll handle medication on the trip and two of them don't.
Generally, Dr. Keely can help me on this, but we did talk to our athletic department about their standard medication protocol. The football team included the medication protocol, but generally, our protocol for any medication on field trips is that the parents have to write a note explaining the medication, the staff member holds on to the medication during the trip, and then the student works with the administrator to, or sorry, the staff member to access that medication throughout the trip.
Do we communicate that to families?
I don't know. Do you know, Dr. Keely, how the medication protocol is communicated to families? Exactly how it's communicated?
I just, I just want to be sure that families know what to do if their student has medication.
Yeah, I, well, what we can do is I can look up the permission slip. Because there is a permission slip and that probably, if it's not on there, then we can add that to that for next year. I will look that up.
Roll call vote, please.
Motion by Demonte and second by Carlson. Mrs. Pope?
Abstain.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Dr. Fields?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
And Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
I have four yes and one abstention. Motion carries.
Consent Agenda items. So as I scroll, wow, that is a lot. I believe we're on to, yeah, just for everyone out there, electronic board book, you have to scroll a ways there to get to where you need. I think we're on to discussion items, correct? Okay, so I'll turn it back over, I think, to Dr. Weisman, who's going to walk us through these items.
Yeah, we, so our first discussion item is our multilingual innovation committee that's been working this year to put together a plan. So I'm going to invite them up to the mic right now and have them share what they've walked through with us, why they did it, and what they're hoping to do in the future.
Hi again. Guess you get to see me again, hooray. Well, I'll be a little more formal right now. Good evening, members of the board and administrators that are present here. So we're here today to share our, the work that our Innovation Committee has worked on so hard for the past year. We met a total of six times throughout the school year and so we were just very excited about the project and we wanted to share the recommendations that we have in place. So the team was engaged in deep reflections, learning, and collaboration. And our main goals was, our main goal was to really rethink how we serve our multilingual population at Warren Township High School. So for some of the things that you're going to hear tonight is the why behind our, our work. We want to make sure that our, you learn about our objectives, our vision, our goals, and the recommendations that we developed for our future programming. And we want to make sure that it is inclusive and innovative and appropriate for all our multilingual learners. So in front of you, you have a list of all our multilingual Innovation Committee members and some of them are present here today. This work would not have been possible without their hard dedication and I am extremely grateful for all their hard work that they brought together. This group was very diverse. They, they were all, some of them were bilingual counselors and we have sheltered teachers in here, have special education members. We also have an instructional coach and gen ed teacher. So it was a diverse group and it was good because we brought in a lot of different perspectives, not just our, our classroom realities, but also a broad spectrum about the school community as a whole. So it was good to have different thoughts and different bodies together from different aspects of the content areas that we all teach. So administrators, again, I forgot to include them, but they were also, as Dr. Geo Karas is here, he also worked a big part, and Dr. Peter Kupner also participated in this as well. So we hope that with their work, that you will, you know, take into consideration some of the recommendations that we have in place. So we move forward. So why did we create the multilingual innovation team? Well, we wanted to make sure and we, we wanted to, I'm sorry, my, my glasses are a little foggy right now. I apologize. So we wanted to make sure that we did not have a language barrier in our educational system here. We wanted to make sure that our students, regardless of the lack of English that they have coming into our district, that they had access to a sound education and that they were going to be successful within our, our educational, in both buildings, in both, in both campuses. So we wanted to look at areas of improvement and we wanted to make sure that all their schooling was actable and there were no other, you know, barriers other than the language. We looked at our newcomers that we have in place and we looked at our long-term multilingual learners. So we wanted to make sure that we were going to really focus on what goals that we're going to be successful with them moving forward. We do have about 28-plus languages in our multilingual programming, so we want to make sure that we are conscious of all those languages that we have and that we meet our needs because in the future, our program is growing. So we want to make sure that we're prepared and we set goals so that we are ready for the diverse needs that our students are coming in, whether they be academic, linguistic, or socio-emotional learning development that we may need for their future. So I will now have, next person please.
Good evening, I'm Leanne Boncher. I'm an EL teacher here. I've been here for about 22 years. So we have some objectives that the committee created and because we have our team of so many different educators from across all different disciplines, we found it really important that first we talk about and make sure everyone knows what our current services are for our multilingual students. So once everyone had that common working knowledge, our next objective is to figure out ways in which we can improve upon or expand services to our multilingual students.
Hi, I'm Joyal Lenick and I'm a special education teacher and instructional coach here. And over half of the students that I serve as a special education teacher are duly identified as also multilingual learners. One of the things that we did as a team is we looked for ways to expand and improve our services, but to have a, a common experience, we did some site visits to have some things to kind of tie our learning back to, in addition to the earlier education that Dr. Moran and Leanne brought to the team for us. We also looked after that at the students that we had, and Dr. Moran spoke to this, they have a continuum of needs. Newcomers have very different needs than duly identified students, than students who are long-term ELS. And so having a framework for the services that we have that meet the unique needs of each of those subpopulations and also meets the ISB requirements was another objective of this team.
And I am Laura Borquez. I'm Social Studies at O'Plane. I teach well history for freshmen and government and economics for the I teach well history for freshmen and government and economics for the sophomores, all sheltered sections, and this is my third year finishing up. And so here, we want to talk a little bit more about the visum of our program in general and give some context to why we're making the recommendations we are. And so first, as mentioned before, we want the multilingual program to be able to provide equitable opportunities for all students, regardless of their background, their language, if they have an IEP or not, what types of classes they are, like, all our students should be able to access the same opportunities. And so number two is that we want to be able to develop language and academic skills. So a lot of our students, maybe after a few years, they get comfortable with speaking English. You might talk to them, you might not know they're a multilingual learner, but then it's the academic skills that they need to grow on, and so we need to be able to, in our program, be able to teach both the academic and the social component, and then develop their academic skills in general, especially if they're coming from a different country, where school might have been working differently. And the third point is to mainstream our long-term ELS, and so I think everybody has brought up long-term ELS, but we have a very high population of students who have been here for many years, more than seven years in the United States. Many of my students were born here. They've been in school in the U.S. their entire lives. Many of my students in sheltered classes do not even speak another language, like, maybe they understand it from home, like, maybe their grandma speaks it, but their parents speak English, they speak English, they don't even speak another language, but because of the way the programs are set up and the laws are set up in the state and the country, then they are in this program and they just haven't gotten the score of the access test to exit and go to gen ed classes. So what we want to be able to do is to not isolate them and keep them in sheltered classes where they, their needs might not be fully met, and they are getting a little too comfortable, and they just want to be there because it's easier, or because their friends are there, and be able to make sure that they interact with the community at large and not just, like, be tracked into sheltered classes for their whole high school career. And number four is just overall, make sure that our students are excelling. Because a lot of them, sure, we can get them to pass, we can get them to graduate, but we want to make sure that they are really learning and taking advantage of all the opportunities we offer.
So the next few slides are going to focus on goals that the committee created. So again, we're just trying to elevate what we currently offer to make more opportunities for our multilingual students. Through our site visit, this first goal, we realized that other districts do a fantastic job of getting more staff EL certified. So to work with EL students or ML students, there's an ESL endorsement, and that teaches teachers how to address the linguistic needs of those students. So our goal is to increase our staff, our staffing with ESL endorsed staff. We also want to educate more of the general ed staff about multilingual students, since more of them are going to be in mainstream courses. We want to make sure they understand how they can better serve those students. So we have, we feel it's important that we, we educate our leaders, like our lead teachers and our people in the department, so that they can help these students be successful in all settings.
Can I ask right here, what, what is involved in being ESL endorsed?
So being it, it's an endorsement that you can receive, kind of like if you're a reading specialist, you get a reading specialist certificate. So it's a series of courses that you learn how to better address the needs of students who are developing English as a second language. So it's a series of, thank you.
At a university or college?
Yes. All right. Our next two goals. The first was to integrate more multilingual students in general education, and so in order to do that, there were some things that need to take place. First, we have to have a way to identify students for placement, what are the access scores, the behaviors, the skills that students have who are successful in a gen ed placement. We also, if we're moving more students in general into general education, which we are next year, we want to make sure that there is a way for teachers to communicate with the multilingual learner staff so that there's a time for that communication. And then also to coordinate with middle schools, that's something that we have done in the past, but we can continue to do and expand how we've done so. The fourth is to redesign our support programming for multilingual learners and a few things. The first, to convert our resource to a teaching role. Currently, it's a duty, and so that would be a step in the right direction. The next there also is to add ELL literacy sections. This is something that Leanne has been piloting this year at each campus with a high level of success, with students being able to then exit supports, and then to also plan an EL lunch support and design an interdisciplinary model that will best serve the needs of all of our students.
I'm going to ask another clarifying question, because I'm not sure I understand all this. What does it mean to convert an EL resource to a teaching role?
So currently, it is a duty, so that is a non-instructional period for a teacher. So while there is a certified teacher there that can support, there isn't, like, a curriculum that's being delivered during that time. Think of it more like a study hall than a scripted curriculum or something that would be moving through.
Thank you.
Then our last two goals. Number five would be to expand the electors for, electives for our multilingual learners and career access, especially our newcomers or recent arrivals with lower English levels. They oftentimes cannot access a lot of the opportunities that our other students can because there are no elective courses designed for them. In a similar way, they may not be able to access tech campus, even though they may be really interested. Like, my sophomore class went on a field trip to tech campus this year to try to motivate them for when they come junior year, and one of them was like, I really want to come, but I don't speak any English yet, because he just got here this year. And so be able to help provide pathways for students to access all those opportunities so they can enhance their careers and their experiences at Warren would be wonderful. And as we propose new electives and new pathways, also, we hope that after next year, for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven year, then to be able to have more, more bilingual paraprofessionals in those elective classes where they can provide support to all of our students. And the last goal would be to improve planning and instructional resources. So we are hoping to have more staff flexibility for support. Like we've said, we want to make sure that our, especially our long-term students are in general education courses, they're not all stuck in a sheltered class, but that means we also need our certified staff for, like, EL staff and our paraprofessionals to have more flexibility in how to support them in a different academic setting, having additional support periods, being able to work with special education staff and general education staff to collaborate and, and be able to make sure our students are successful, even though they're not always in sheltered classes. And we also need to make sure that we have access to instructional materials, like translating devices, culturally and language-appropriate textbooks or resources and curricula, and also make sure we use data for scheduling decisions so that our classes, if we do sheltered or if we, there's students in gen ed classes that they're all getting support and none of the classes are getting too many students or too many needs that are difficult to be met by the one teacher, to make sure that everyone is equally supported.
Thank you. The next goal that I'm going to talk about is strengthening family communication. As we all know, communication is key to student success between parents and the school system. So we're proposing to create, for the twenty-five, twenty-six year, a playbook where we'll be able to give guide to our staff and our, any, any support staff or any administration on where, who to access for translation or interpreting services. So this guidebook will be like a little handbook where they can, they know exactly who to reach for what services. And then the other thing, we wanted to explore internal and external translation services. We have multiple languages. As I mentioned, we have twenty-eight plus languages in the district, so we want to make sure that we are going beyond to Spanish translation services. Yes, the majority of our multilingual learners do speak Spanish, but we're also very conscious that we do have other languages beyond Spanish. So we're, we want to go ahead and have something in place for those other low incident languages as well. And then for the twenty-six, twenty-seven year, we'll review our guidebook and, and see what areas of improvement we can make or what's working well and what's not, so that we can work upon from that, from those actions that we will be taking place during the twenty-five, twenty-six year. Dr. Gio, you get the last one for me.
So this is a lot of work and a lot of, a lot of goals to make sure that these goals are able to be brought to fruition. We need to look at our staffing and make sure we have people in place to help make sure that these, these ideas are successful. So one of those for twenty-five, twenty-six would be a proposal, a recommendation to implement two multilingual lead teachers, one at each campus. Currently, we have zero lead teachers. So really, Sandy serves as the bilingual director for the district, and then Leanne supports her as an EL liaison. So staffing, the teacher model, the team's talked quite a bit about that. So as we talk about staffing, I, the state talks about ESL services in terms of minutes or like service levels. So a EL student can go to a general education classroom, but if that general education teacher is not ESL certified, it does not count, and it looks like we are not providing that student services. So when we talk about our teacher model, we're talking about increasing the number of EL, ESL endorsed staff. It's talking about how do we creatively get our ESL endorsed staff out working in different contexts to provide services while we are mainstreaming kids, planning for bilingual counseling for students. So we have two bilingual counselors that do a phenomenal job and are just a great asset to our organization, and we just want to keep thinking about how do we do that and how do we keep getting better in that area? And then we, we got to think about our para. We've expanded, our, our paras have expanded a little bit over the years, and Special Education Department this year did a phenomenal job talking and training paras and developing a formal para educator model, and we want to work on next year, putting together a good, solid para staffing plan for where we want to go as a district and a PD plan to accommodate or to go right along with that. So as, if we are able to increase the number of paraprofessionals that we have, that we know how to utilize them, and we are teachers that have them, know how to work with them appropriately. So just to kind of lay it out, what all this means in terms of how we think this impacts staffing in the district, kind of going from top left over. As lead teacher model, we think that as two lead teachers at each campus, one at Opalein and one at Almond, what that would help us do is provide the level, building level program support. We do have an EL PLT that meets at each campus, but that's, again, Sandy's wearing multiple hats. It's very difficult to kind of keep that up and so we have those teachers feel supported throughout the school year. Sandy does a phenomenal job of getting with teachers, but it'd be great, we see the success that our lead teachers are having with the new model, and we think it would be a good fit here with the multilingual department. And then also, as we talk about increasing our student intervention supports, that's one of the things that our lead teachers do, is they, they do have an assignment every day where they are working with our lunchtime supports, making sure kids enrolled in their courses are accessing the different academic needs that they have, academic supports that they need. And then also helping, having another person help how we utilize our paras, right? So as we talk about how our paras working in classrooms, how, helping that para and that teacher develop that relationship, we would have a lead teacher to be supporting that work. Para educators, based on our, as we went to different site visits and we talked to different schools, we are under, comparatively understaffed in para educators. We, as we looked at what we are trying to do, we thought that two additional para, para educators per building would be an amazing benefit to our kids. That would allow us to have paras in our elective classes. So right now, our paras are limited to pretty much supporting instruction within our sheltered program and some of our newcomer classes. This would allow us to have paras supporting students in electives, supporting students in gen ed classes. It would really allow us to extend our reach with that program, supporting newcomers, supporting, and then with that, they, we establish a training program so we're not just going into classrooms. Paras know how to work with our kids, they know how to work with teachers. There's an expectation of program that we'd have that we would be following. One thing that we did talk about was that in this model, a para professional for multilingual does not necessarily need to be a bilingual para. It's fantastic if they are, but really, our long-term ELS, like Laura was talking about, a lot of our long-term ELS speak English, they just need a little bit extra help. So whereas if we're going to support our long-term ELS, we don't necessarily need to have a para that speaks Spanish, we need a para that cares about kids and wants to work with kids. In student services, there's a lot of work that the district is doing right now in student services. The team really just want to make sure that there's a consideration of bilingual services that's in place during that student services planning. So as we look at the redesign of the model, how are, how does that impact how we serve our multilingual students through social workers, counselors, and psychologists? Courses, we want to make sure that we have high interest options that are available for our, for our multilingual students, and like, why is that understaffing? Because it comes down to certifications. Again, the more people that we have that are gen ed teachers that also have an ESL endorsement, and more different types of programs that we can offer, different types of electives that we can offer, and then really kind of leaning into that career pathways in tech campus, how can we provide a great opportunity? How can we make, allow more of our multilingual kids to access tech campus and provide them the support that they need linguistically to attend tech campus? Professional development, we want to make sure that we're providing meaningful PD for staff. We did spend January, our January Institute Day this year focused on our multilingual students, and that was very positively received by staff. We are doing, we have some plans next year. One of our learning targets with our lead teachers is to do more work around multilingual learning and just the legalities of it, the requirements of it, what does instruction look like? Our lead teachers are excited to learn more about that, continuing to collaborate with one another, but the biggest thing is around staff capacity. How do we find more ESL endorsed teachers? How do we encourage more teachers to become ESL endorsed? And then what can we do to help our teachers, even if they're not going to get an ESL endorsed how, endorsement? How can we help them learn more about good instructional practice? How do you support multilingual learners? And how, what are the different types of activities that we can provide or learning opportunities that we can provide for our staff? Interventions, there's, one of the models that we saw was at Addison Trail High School that we were really excited about. It's like a centralized support hub for, for multilingual students where you have a reading, like, a multilingual ESL endorsed teacher focuses a lot of reading with a para, but students then are able to act, go out and access, they need help in math, they can go access math from that, from that, that support hub and then come back and work with a para. They can access help in science. So it really becomes a wraparound service, so there's a place where they can go, a place where they can get help, where somebody's checking in with them and helping them develop those reading skills, but also where they can go get specialized help in other content areas. One of the gaps that our team talked about was our multilingual ELA courses. So in a lot of our content areas, multilingual students can go get help in their math class in a, from the math resource, right? But our multilingual ELA curriculum is very different from our English one or English two or English three curriculum. It's not the same books necessarily. We might have a freshman in multilingual ELA three because their placement in our ELA program is based on access scores or their level of English knowledge, right? So we might have a freshman in ELA three, they can't really go to an English one freshman support for help. So that was a gap that we identified that we are looking to, for a way to address next year or the year after. And then continuing to improve our literacy and EL resource support. That's one thing that we already put in place for next year. So EL resource was what Joy was talking about, was at our Opalein campus. It's a half period, but now we're using that as a teacher assignment, like, just like we're doing with our lunchtime supports within our content areas. And then ELL literacy is actually a class here at the Almond campus. It's an English elective credit for our multilingual students, and we're redesigning that course. It's kind of a bridge for us to start to move more towards that support hub idea that we're going to be, we would like to work on next year. So I just want to say before we move on, I'm super proud of, to be part of this team. These teachers, administrators gave a lot of time over the year. They started their work, I think, the second day we were back in August, and really never stopped. They had great questions, great dialogue, the general education teachers that didn't have a lot of experience with. a lot of experience with, working with multilingual students, asked a lot of questions. Our multilingual staff answered a lot of questions. Nobody got defensive. Everybody was really in it the whole time to figure out how can we better serve our students. And I appreciate Dr. Moran's leadership throughout the whole process to help us get to this point today where we can provide some recommendations for the board to consider. Thank you.
Question?
Yeah.
About 20 minutes ago, one of you, I lost track, which said something about you have students in your class that speak only English, unless I misunderstood.
True.
And which leads me to question, how were the students selected for this? Do they, can they like graduate and go to the mainstream?
So students are identified through, for multilingual learners through a home language survey that they take when they enroll in school. And Dr. Moran, answer this because she can answer better than me.
That's okay. This is a nationwide problem that we're seeing right now. There's a lot of long-term learners. We call them long-term. Anyone who's been in a ESL, bilingual, two-way dual-language, one-way dual-language program that is identified as learning English for more than six years is identified as a long-term EL. So that's the term that we use for them. Unfortunately, that's true. We, we have a home language survey that when a student enrolls into a school district, that they have to answer two questions. The first one being, is there a language other than English spoken at the home? And does your child speak a language other than English in the home? The moment that a parent answers yes to either one of those two questions, we are required to screen them for English language services. We've been, a group of us, of directors have been fighting that, hoping that they can change that rule because, again, many of the, that's a hard assessment, and a lot of times, whether, especially when they're younger, a lot of the students struggle to take a test. If they're new to it, especially when they're first graders or kindergartners or second graders, they're not, they might not be good test takers. So then depending on the score that they, depending on what score they, they come out in that screening, then they are either identified as non-English speaker or an English speaker. So.
It's still in the program.
Yep.
There's no way out, no way out.
No way out. You have to score a 4.8 overall composite in order to be out of this, of English as a second language. We do have a lot of our, our long-term ELs who orally, they speak good social, but they do need those skills in academic English. So that's where I'm working with our staff to make sure they're doing more ORSE practice and giving them tips and tools on how to successfully score well on the state access test. But I can happily tell you that last year, the year before last year, there were about 14 students who exited services who scored a score of 4.8 or higher. Last year, we had 33 students exit a score of 4 point or higher, and this year, we have 51 students who exited, who are no longer.
They can get out if they hit a certain score.
Yes. They will no longer need to take the access test or be in English as a second language shelter courses. All we have to do is monitor them for two years. So what, the hard work is paying off. We're really trying to motivate our students, our teachers to do more ORSE activities in the classroom. And again, with the tips and tools that we're giving them, we're seeing the success as well. But that is the rule, and like Dr. Geo Caris mentioned, we by law are mandated to provide services to the students. So we're trying to find ways to mainstream them more and maybe have, give them one class or a little hub for the future, a place that they can go. If we do mainstream them, where some of our ESL teachers can provide support in language acquisition and academic language support.
Congratulations on those statistics.
Thank you. We're so happy. We are, I was, I felt like I won the lottery.
Yeah.
When we receive those scores. And you can ask other districts, but many districts are neighboring schools. They exit about three or four kids at most at the high school, and at elementary level, it's like maybe 10. Our neighboring schools, I asked them, they only had, at the middle school level, one kid, and then somebody else had like four students. And these are right directly next to us. So I, I'm very proud of our staff and our administration for supporting us. Any more questions about placement? It's a score. We're trying to place them out. And again, we are working. I think it's, ORSE is just a, a skill that is hard even for our gen ed students because a lot of them are using the social media. It's different. They're not communicating. So the more we, we teach them how to communicate and.
I'm an politician. I want to know who makes that rule and is anybody lobbying them?
Ellen State Board of Education. You could join me. I'll be going to DC next month to talk to legislators.
I tell you, my parents speak Swedish. I'm in your class. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you scream.
Any other questions?
No, and Dr. Geo, did you have more to?
I just wanted to like, to.
Speak into the microphone, please.
That, because yes, when they're little or whenever they enroll in school first time, they do that screening test where they might be like, okay, maybe they do well, so they're not in the program. And then if they don't do well, then they, they do that access test every year. And so that's the one where we are seeing students exit now. But some students just never do. And I, just my personal comment, I would be curious to see like, if our gen ed students took it, how well would they do? Because it's a really difficult test.
Is that it from the board? Any other questions?
No, I'm just going to reiterate what Dr. Geo Caris said, which is, thank you for working on this. We're always, as a board, appreciative of those that go above and beyond their normal duties to do work like this and then provide recommendations. So what we'll do is we'll take nod when specific recommendations come our way, and we'll remember this presentation and discussion. So thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do also want to just acknowledge the board has been very supportive with some additional staffing over the last few years to help this type of programming. I really appreciate that. I think the staff see that. You've also been really supportive of the idea of getting staff out to go see some other schools, which is something that they did, and I just want to appreciate, also share my appreciation for that work.
One other item on there?
Yeah, we, we don't need a whole lot of discussion on this item, but I am considering bringing the, a calendar, a school year calendar to the board a little bit earlier than we've done it in the past. So perhaps in the early fall. So if, I don't know if people have specific thoughts for against, for or against that, just something to put on your radar. We could talk about it now if you'd like.
I have heard community members in the whole time I've lived here talk about why don't the schools all have the same calendar? So if us doing our calendar earlier would help facilitate everybody understanding how the feeder schools and the high school fit together, I think that would be valuable.
Thank you, Dr. Weisman. And just like consent agenda, we have quite a few action items on our list. So we're going to go through those one at a time, and I'll ask that somebody make a motion, and then we can discuss if need be otherwise. The first one, A, is the approval of agreements regarding the receipt of subdivision contributions and indemnification. Is there a motion? Let me read it fully then, if, and I can just read these two for ease. I move to approve the agreements regarding the receipt of developer subdivision contributions and indemnification in the event of a private agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Motion by Demonte and second.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
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 Okay, action item B. This is the financial portion of approving paperback books. I think what I'll do is I'll just read these, and then if there's discussion, jump in. I move to approve the paperback books bid and award the contracts to the recommended vendors of the amount of $91,728.72 for the 2025-2026 school year. Can I have a second? Roll call vote?
Motion by Demonte.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson? Yes.
Dr. Field?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
By yes, motion carries.
Okay, action item C, which is authorizing permanent interfund transfers. I move to approve the resolution authorizing permanent interfund transfer for capital projects purposes in the amount of $4 million. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Could we pause and just talk about what this is?
Absolutely. At any points when someone makes a second, please, any board member, go ahead and just say, I'd like to discuss it, and we can.
Can we just review what is going on here and why do we have to do this?
We sure can.
Our screen's going to come up to the microphone.
Anything involving.
As-cued.
Money.
Your question, why do you have to do the resolution?
Why do you have to move the money from one, what are we, moving it from one fund to another fund?
So we're moving the money from operations and maintenance to capital projects. And because our, the very large projects that we do have to be paid out of capital projects. So we need to move the money. If it's a small, you know, a $10,000 or whatever project, that can be paid out of operations and maintenance. But if it's like $50,000 or $1 million, it is paid out of capital projects.
And the board has to approve moving money from one fund to another?
Correct. Mm-hmm.
This, we do annually, right? Is this the annual transfer?
This is the second.
Second.
Transfer because we have more, the one that we did in February for $4 million, the majority of that money was for, to pay for the roofing project for this year. And this $4 million that we're moving now is for the additional projects that we're planning to do in the summer.
Question. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. There's a few of these like this, but.
Yeah, you might have more. There might be more questions.
There might be more. So I don't know if you want to sit down and get comfortable or just wait. But action item D is about the resolution abating working cash fund to operations and maintenance slash capital projects funds. And therefore, I move to approve the resolution abating working cash fund to operation and maintenance slash capital funds, project funds in the amount of $11 million. May I have a second?
Do we need to vote on the $4 million?
We didn't, didn't vote on this. Oh, my apologies. We did not. Let me back up because we had discussion. I forgot about that. So would the clerk, please do a roll call vote on the $4 million, the previous action item?
Motion by Demonte and.
Yes.
Dr. Field?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
By yes, motion carries.
All right. And if I don't have to read D again, did I have, did somebody make a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? I'm now going to start saying, is there any discussion, Susan?
Perfect.
All right. I probably should have been all along. So is there any discussion from board members or questions for Chris Green? All right.
Is this basically the same thing, but we're moving it from working cash?
So this $11 million transfer is for the locker room, and so we're using funds out of working cash, but it's, we can't move money right from working cash to capital projects the way the law is written. You have to move it from working cash to O and M, and then move it from O and M to capital projects.
You told me that five times before. Thank you for saying it again.
We'll do another five. Don't worry.
I think we're at the point of needing a roll call vote on that one.
Motion by Demonte and.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
And Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
By yes, motion carries.
Okay, action item E is about the limited change order authority. So I'll make the motion. I approve, I move to approve the resolution delegating limited change order authority to the superintendent and assistant superintendent of business and operations for construction projects. Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote?
Motion by Demonte, second by Pope?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Dr. Field?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
By yes, motion carries.
Action item F, which is about substitute teacher pay rates. I move to approve the substitute teacher pay rates for the 2025-2026 school year as presented. May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Motion by Demonte, second by Pope?
Yes.
Dr. Field?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Doc, Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
By yes, motion carries.
Okay, it's, action item G is approval of administrator non-union and transportation contracts and compensation. I move to approve the administrator non-union and transportation contracts and compensation for the 2025-2026 school year as presented. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I would just note that for comparison purposes, I appreciate the school board's consideration of administrator salaries on an annual basis for comparison purposes. On average, our administrators are earning a base salary about 10% below the average when compared to other high school districts in the county.
Discussion after Danny's comments. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Motion by Demonte, second by Pope. Dr. Field?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
By yes, motion carries.
And as we bring our meeting to a close, a reminder that at a governance level, we are respectful, resilient, engaged, now and always. Go Blue Devils. We need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All right. Motion having been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And do we, roll call vote, please, yeah?
Motion by Demonte and second by Pope. Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Field?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes. The time, oh, go ahead.
By yes, motion carries.
Great. The time is 8:47 PM. Thanks and have a good night.